I'd like to call the meeting to order, it's 7:03. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, the first item on the workshop agenda tonight is a presentation, a proposal for the Boys and Girls Club in Wyndham.
Absolutely.
Introduce yourselves, and we do have television, so speak into the microphone so that folks can hear it.
Great. So, I'm Andrew Janfredo, I'm an English teacher here at Wyndham High School.
And I am Kat Wumble, and I teach 3rd grade at Wyndham Center Elementary.
So, we're just here to give some information on the project we've been working on for the Boys and Girls Club of America, to hopefully bring their programming to our students here. So, we just want to start with like, a brief history of what we've been doing over the past year for this effort. So, about a year ago, we came together as a group of concerned teachers, parents, community leaders, and we kind of rallied around our children, our students, as we tend to do. And, we kind of worked together to identify this need, that there's not enough after-school programming for our students in the district at the moment. Students, even if they go to the after-school program, when they go home, there's just, there's a bit of a void. So, through our research, we identified some alarming statistics concerning dropout rates, absenteeism, and we felt that, to help solve these problems, after-school programming could be a potential solution. So, we reached out to the Hartford Boys and Girls Club. We had heard that Wyndham in the past had attempted to create a partnership with them about a decade ago, so we reached out again, and we were put in contact with their CEO and President Sam Gray. And right off the bat, Sam was incredibly supportive of our efforts, and has been involved for the past several months. So, Sam said that he would be willing to help us form a club, and file us under his 501(c)(3) when we launch, when we eventually launch a pilot program this fall in 2016, but we have to raise our own funds to do so. But, he has been in regular contact with his Board of Directors and the Boys and Girls Club of America National Organization about this partnership, assured us all parties are on board, and are very supportive of opening a club here. So, our pilot program, which we have in mind, would target 50 students here at the high school, and would focus on two main programs. One related to college readiness, and one related to the arts. Both of these were programs that we identify as areas of both need and areas of high interest amongst our students. So, the next was, why a Boys and Girls Club? Why is that something we identified? So, I think the big thing is that we saw it as a nationally renowned brand. When I've mentioned to people around town that this is something we're working on, they say like, "Oh, I used to go to my back, when it was called a Boys Club." Like, "Oh, I used to go to my local Boys Club," and it really helped me out. So, being the nationally recognized brand that it was, we felt that the services it offers would be invaluable to our students. And the second was that highly quality programming, especially their college statistics. Like, 83% of club participants applied to college right after high school graduation, which is phenomenal. So, with the brand, the quality program, we felt that the Boys and Girls Club was the way to go. From our survey, we identified that, we surveyed about 200 Wyndham High School students. From that survey, we identified, as I mentioned, those two areas of want, those two areas of need, college readiness and the arts. And what we also realized is that over 100 students are not playing sports after school, and want to be involved in an after-school program. They just don't feel like what is currently offered is something they would want to do. So, we felt as though providing additional programming through the Boys and Girls Club could help those students find ways to stay involved after school.
So, our first step in this is that last week, we actually went to the Town Council, and we presented all of our data that we've researched so far, so like Andrew said, the survey, as well as the different statistics in Wyndham, and with Boys and Girls Clubs nationally. And at the Town Council meeting, we were able to have over 30 parents, teachers, community members speak on our behalf, just to show support that they thought this would also be a great idea to bring to Wyndham. The Council unanimously voted to support the project in the future. We also have, so I have some things I can share to you, so these are just some pictures.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just some pictures of the teachers and community members that came out to support this project, which just shows that, you know, although we do have after-school programming at the moment, it's something that we obviously still need to improve in the future. So, right now, we're still, as Andrew mentioned before, we're working with Sam Gray, who is the CEO of the Hartford Boys and Girls Club. And so, he is helping us connect to different nonprofits across eastern Connecticut to try to help us with the funding base and build that. We also have the support of Victoria Nemirovsky, who's the Director of the Wyndham Area Interfaith Ministries, and she was part of a group, I think it was about eight years ago, that tried to start a Boys and Girls Club here previously. So, we're hosting a community forum on June 4th, and we invite all of you to attend, just to help members of the community learn a little bit more about this project, and to try to gain some support for the Wyndham Boys and Girls Club.
So, I think, in addition to the community forum on June 4th, what we're asking for is the following. We realize that the Board can't directly financially support the program at this time, given the state of the current budget. However, we do ask for support through partnership and seeking financial resources moving forward through current and future grants, specifically the 21st Century Grant, which we've identified as a potential source of funding. So, that is our presentation, and I wanted to thank you for your time again.
Where is it on June 4th?
It is at the Kingdom, we have flyers that have everything, so we'll pass those out. It's at Kingdom Life, which is on Union Street.
What time is it, Alfredo? What time is it?
It is, what time is it? 1 o'clock, right? 1 o'clock, June 4th. Be 1 to 3, I believe.
Okay, any other questions, comments? You've got a budget in here of $50,000?
Correct.
And how much of that do you expect to get from the grant?
From?
Said you want to support for, you're going to put in a grant application?
So, we've put in a grant application, so what we are, let me clarify. So, we're hoping to work with Dr. Garcia, with the Board, about possibly adding us in to 21st Century Grant, which I believe the district is going to be applying for, anyway.
So, we're finishing the first cycle of that grant, and the next one will start pretty soon, so we could, they could partner with us in that grant as a provider of the 21st Century.
Okay, and so, how much of that grant would?
That I will not.
You don't know yet.
That I will not know, but they could be one of the projects.
And I know that you've requested some, that you're in the process of requesting somebody from the town. I think, you know, Boys and Girls Club's a great organization, it'd be terrific if we could find a way to support it in this community, but it's going to be a challenge. Any other questions?
I think I was, I was at that, I don't think, I know I was at that meeting, that evening, and I kind of communicated to the people that were there, that until our budget passes and we know where our funding is, that, and they all know, because most of them are teachers, and Teach for America teachers, I think, are a good portion of you guys as well, but most of you are teachers, and you guys, you know, are aware of what's going on in our schools, so you know that we're not floating in resources and stuff like that. I think they mostly wanted to come today to just give us information, since the Board hadn't received anything about this before it went to the Town Council.
Absolutely. We felt that as the Board of Education, you guys should be kept in the loop of our efforts, obviously.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, let's see, so, the next item on the agenda is Superintendent's presentation on the-
International Baccalaureate Program.
International Baccalaureate Program. We've talked about this at retreats and whatnot, but we haven't actually had a presentation on what the program is, and how it might help us in Wyndham.
You know, the, our missions clearly states that isn't, that we are to provide students with access and opportunities, and as we look at providing access and opportunity to our students, there are different ways of doing that, and there are different opportunities that meet the needs of different students. We have a program called Wyndham Echo, is another, we have Opportunity for Students. We have AP, that is an Opportunity for Students, but there is also the International Baccalaureate Program, that is another program that provides opportunities to college, to students, and that helps students really get into college at a very high rate. We have been exploring that opportunity here, the opportunity of having the program, we have been exploring it for quite some time, and I have invited Mr. Arpin, that has tremendous background in education, and particularly in the IB program. He has been a Spanish teacher for 18 years. He also has been the Principal of the IB, Connecticut IB Academy in East Hartford for eight years. And for the last, I will say the last 10 years, that school, the Connecticut Academy, has ranked between 25 and 30 in the country, and first or second in the state of Connecticut. Currently, Mr. Arpin is the President of the, I can't pronounce it, Guild?
It's the Guild of IB Schools of Northeast.
The Guild of IB Schools of the Northeast, and the purpose of this organization is to provide support to IB schools in the region. He's here, he has presented nationally, state, and also internationally about IB programs, and is here tonight to present to the Board an overview of the IB program. As I said before, we've been exploring this possibility, and we want to know if it's possible how it fits with us, but I think the best person to give an overview is someone that is the pro in this field, and you are.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I am very excited to introduce this opportunity to Wyndham. I think Wyndham is a great place to consider the International Baccalaureate. The International Baccalaureate is a program that provides education for all levels, all grades, but we're looking tonight at the high school version of that, which would be introduced here at Wyndham High School. As Dr. Garcia said, I was Principal at the Connecticut IB Academy up in East Hartford. I was very proud of all of our achievements, and yes, I'll say them again, that we were, every year, we've been either number one or number two in the state, and all, pick a ranking, we're up there in it, and we've been very proud of that. We're also a blue ribbon school, so we've done quite a bit in a town and in an environment with a student body not dissimilar to what is present here in Wyndham. As an inter-district magnet school, we took kids from all over, primarily from East Hartford, Hartford, Manchester, but also some of the outlying areas. We did have one family from Wyndham a number of years ago. The first member of that family came to us kicking and screaming. He did not want to come, but he thrived, he did great, he, I don't know what year he's in, but he's at Yale, so, and, you know, he had his, an opportunity to go to, I think, West Point? I think, one of the military academies, but he did very, very well by us. For somebody that didn't want to be a part of us, he really thrived and really did very, very well, and we're very proud of that. We're going to talk a couple of different things tonight, I'm going to give you a general overview of what the International Baccalaureate is, what this program is, I'm going to talk a little bit about some research. I've given you some papers to kind of go along with, and then if you find you're having trouble falling asleep tonight, please use these papers to read and, you know, let you settle in there, but, and then we'll take some questions after that. So, I think this program is a good fit for this district, and I hope that you will agree, and let us move forward. So, let's start. And, okay, it works. So, the Diploma Program, and again, this is an international program, this is done all over the world, it is based in Cardiff, Wales, with offices throughout the world. The Western Hemisphere office is located in Bethesda, Maryland, so you'll notice that is not a typo, we use the anglicized spelling of a lot of the words, and every time I try to put that in, if I'm spelling it out, you know, I get the little squiggly red lines on the computer, so I just stop doing it. But, the Diploma Program is the program that's at the high school level. There are four programs total. Again, we're going to focus tonight on the Diploma Program. It is a program for high school students, specifically for students in their last two years of high school, but the way that you structure this program, the way that you introduce it into your school, it just naturally comes to all of your students from ninth through 12th. Okay, so here's what you need to know about the IB and the Diploma Program. By the way, the International Baccalaureate has three official languages, Spanish, English, and French, so whenever you see things, you'll see a couple of videos here, and you'll see them in the different languages. So, those are the three official languages, but there are many different languages that are taught in IB classes. So, the IB is, it's not-for-profit, although, you know, it works very, very well, you know, that doesn't matter, the status of it doesn't matter, it is a foundation that creates a better world through education. It creates inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring students. We want to make a more peaceful world through international education. We want to encourage compassionate lifelong learners, and this is the piece of it that has always struck me, the piece of their mission statement that has always struck me the most. Our programs encourage students across the world to become active compassionate lifelong learners who understand that other people with their differences can also be right. I think that that's a message that, you know, I would see my students understand that very clearly at the teenage level, we adults, not so much, every once in a while. So, the IB, oh, what happened? Oh, okay, so what is an IB education? We're going to take a look at a quick video that will introduce you to the programs and what the IB is all about. Okay, so here we go.
For over 40 years, an international baccalaureate education has been helping people cross the boundaries that separate languages, countries, and cultures. Today, the IB continues that tradition, providing a continuum of international education that features four high-quality programs for students from 3 to 19 years old. In a rapidly changing world, IB programs aim to develop intercultural understanding and respect, a mission reflected in 10 core values. The IB learner profile describes the attributes of people who are empowered to help create a better and more peaceful world. As IB learners, we strive to be:
Inquirers.
Curious, enthusiastic, lifelong learners who ask powerful questions.
Knowledgeable.
Exploring locally and globally significant ideas.
Thinkers.
Critical, creative, ethical decision-makers.
Communicators.
Good listeners, confident in more than one language.
Principled.
Honest, fair, and responsible.
Open-minded.
Developing critical appreciation for our own cultures and the cultures of others.
Caring.
Committed to service with the community.
Risk-takers.
Courageous, resourceful, and resilient.
Balanced.
Focused on well-being for ourselves and those around us.
Reflective.
Thoughtful, realistic, and hopeful for the future.
At the heart of an IB education are passionate lifelong learners who believe that how you
learn and why you're learning is as important as what you study in school.
Students who are at the center of IB programs, internationally-minded people who recognize
their common humanity and shared guardianship of the planet.
An IB education means opportunities to develop healthy relationships, imagination, and ethical
reasoning.
It means building the confidence and persistence students need to achieve challenging goals.
It means learning what it is to be human, and how to thrive in a complex world.
IB learners work together to turn experience into understanding.
As they learn how to learn and how to manage their own learning, IB students are supported
by assessment.
A variety of strategies through which teachers help them understand how they're doing and
how they can keep doing better.
An IB education helps students build understanding through inquiry, action, and reflection.
Students learn by doing, connecting the classroom with the world beyond.
IB programs culminate in exhibitions, projects, and independent research that demonstrate
not only what students know, but also what they can do.
An IB education creates learning communities in which students can increase their understanding
of language and culture, and which can help them to become more globally engaged.
Through IB programs, students explore how to face both local and global challenges
that involve the environment, development, conflict, rights, cooperation, and governance.
The IB's courses and curriculum frameworks are engaging, relevant, challenging, and
significant.
In IB programs, students learn content that is worth knowing and that can help them make
a difference.
An IB education spans traditional academic disciplines and pushes students to make connections
across many fields of study.
IB programs are broad and balanced, conceptual, and connected.
Their rigorous models of assessment have earned widespread respect, including recognition
of the IB diploma as an international university entrance qualification.
The IB represents an independent worldwide community of educators who are committed
to excellence.
Thousands of creative IB world schools collaborate to connect high ideals with the day-to-day
details of teaching and learning.
They hold each other mutually accountable to standards and practices that define high-quality
educational programs.
What makes an IB education unique?
Alumni, educators, supporters, and more than a million students and their families
every year, working together to make a better world through education.
Okay, so that gives you some idea, you heard some different comments in there, you heard about assessment, you heard about the numbers of students, over a million students and their families involved worldwide. This is, again, a worldwide program, it is taught all over the world, and in the United States is, the United States is actually the center of the most growth in IB, other than in Ecuador, where a few years ago, the President of Ecuador approached IB with a proposal to make all of the high schools in Ecuador Diploma Program high schools. So, the folks in Bethesda got a little nervous, and they ended up agreeing to create 500 Diploma Programs in the schools in Ecuador over a five-year period, and they're in the middle of doing that now. So, that's, you know, comparatively speaking, a big area of growth, but the largest area of growth is in the United States. So, you heard about the learner profile, and learner profile is 10 aspects of learning, of humanity, of being an individual, being a positive contributor to your community, and there's a list of them right there, and you can, you can see them in a couple of different ways. I'm not going to read them to you, but you really get a good sense of what the, what Diploma Program, what all the IB programs look for in terms of the kind of people they're trying to develop. But, I will show you a video.
A changing world. IB programs aim to develop intercultural understanding and respect, a mission reflected in 10 core values. The IB learner profile describes the attributes of people who are empowered to help create a better and more peaceful world.
As IB learners, we strive to be:
Inquirers.
Curious, enthusiastic, lifelong learners who ask powerful questions.
Knowledgeable.
Exploring locally and globally significant ideas.
Thinkers.
So, I guess, be quiet.
Okay, you, these are all available if you want to see it, so I won't, I won't waste your time with a technical problem. Little bit of background, though, about the IB. The IB has been around for over 45 years. It was actually developed as a, an answer, a solution to a problem. The problem was, students of international diplomats, children of international diplomats, would be moved from station to station as their parents' assignments changed, and they would then be in situations where they would have different levels of education, different curricula, different expectations, and it's hard to move around that way. So, the International Baccalaureate, the Diploma Program, was created to give those students a more consistent education at these different posts. So, that was the meaning of it. It then grew, and this, I know this is small, but in 1968, it was founded. The first official exams were given two years later, and we'll talk about exams another time. The English and French were made as the first official languages, and then a few years later, Spanish was added to that. As I said before, the first IB program was the high school version, the Diploma Program, and in 1994, the Middle Years Program, the NYPD, guess what grades those are for? The middle grades. That was established, and then three years later, the Primary Years Program was developed. In East Hartford, where I worked, when our school opened back in 1999, it was, we just had the Diploma Program. In my time there, we established a PYP school, and as I was leaving, as I retired two years ago, we were in the process of developing an NYPD. So, we're going to plan on having the entire continuum, the entire spectrum of IB education in East Hartford. And then, if you see in 2009, 100,000 candidates for exams, and a couple of years later, 4,000 IB world schools throughout the world. So, there's been a lot of growth in the, in the program. There's some things that you can think about in terms of, what are you looking at? You're looking at rigorous assessment, you're looking at research, you're looking at a pre-university education, okay? Your kids coming into the Diploma Program are going to get college-level learning at the high school level. Age-appropriate, certainly, but college-level learning, they'll learn how to research, they'll learn critical thinking, that's incredibly important. They'll learn how to reflect on things, community service is a big part of it. And I want to draw your attention to that circle on the right there. I know it's kind of hard to see, but you see the IB Diploma Program on the outer circle? The next circle in is basically the curriculum, and if you listen to what they are, you know that it is a general education curriculum. You look at Studies in Language and Literature at 12 o'clock there. Over to the left at about 10 o'clock is Language Acquisition. What we mean by that is a second language. You all study a second language as an IB Diploma Program student. On the other side of that, Individuals in Society at about 2 o'clock, that's your social studies courses, that's your history, your philosophy, your psychology, so on and so forth. Just below that, Mathematics. To the left of that, Sciences, and then underneath the Arts. So, this is a comprehensive high school curriculum. Nothing different than what you're used to right now, except that the quality and the rigor is much more significant. And then, in the middle of that, the next set of circles is the, are the core elements that make the IB program different. You see on the left there, Theory of Knowledge, that's a course that asks the question, how do we know what we know? If you want to hear some really intense discussions, sit in on a TOK class. You'd be so impressed and so amazed by what these students are saying, and how they respect one another's opinion, and we can learn something from them. To the right of that, the Extended Essay, is a 20-ish-page research paper that they complete by the end of their senior year. I know that Wyndham has the Capstone Project. This is a Capstone Project. This is a way to culminate some, their learning in a topic of the students choosing. And then finally, Creativity, Activity, and Service. It's community service on a much more significant scale. And then, in the middle, you probably can't see it, but you've seen the silhouettes of the three shapes of the children, representing all of the ages that this program represents, or that this program serves. Let's see if we can do that. How am I doing the time? I'm going to skip this, because I want to talk a few more, about a few more things, if we can get back to this weekend. Some of the, some of the comments, the people say, "It gives children an international perspective, but also focuses on how to be a learner. We teach them how to know what they want to know. Skills I've learned from a student, skills I've learned through the IB will continue to put me in good stead for the rest of my life, gave me the peace of mind and confidence in my ability. University is still a lot of work, but I know no matter how high the bar is set, I will be able to make the jump. It is great preparation for college. It makes your students great candidates to get into the colleges of their choice." Folks want, university admissions people want IB Diploma Program students, because they know they are getting a well-prepared student. know they are getting a well-prepared student. In the times where schools like Eastern are getting rid of the remedial levels, the 0-90-whatever levels in their courses, they're looking for kids who can at least start in the 100s. A lot of times, they're ready to start in the 200 levels. So they're getting good, good students. Developing its curriculum, the IB has a curriculum that is the same all over. The choices that the teacher has reside. So as an English teacher, Andrew can choose the kind of books he wants, he can choose an international author that he wants to compare with his students, he can choose the styles that he wants to go for, but he has to do certain things. He has to have his students complete certain tasks and certain assignments that he helps evaluate, as well as people that are trained to evaluate the student's work. He might like the kid in the front row that's really trying hard but only got the 75, so he might give him a B-, because he likes the kid. That same kid's work is going somewhere else to somebody else who is simply reading the work. They're evaluating the student's performance, so that's a very critical piece of it. So teachers, consultants, examiners, staff, people, all get together, and they regularly review and revise the curriculum in each of the academic areas, okay? So that gives you a little sense of what the diploma program is. It's a very brief thing. There's a lot to this, I won't lie to you, there's a lot to it, and when the high school staff gets to it, they're going to be very entrenched in a lot of work, but the rewards are going to be wonderful. Okay, I gave you some research papers. Stop it. So I wanted to just go through those for a couple of minutes with you and just kind of highlight a few things. The first research brief is about national trends for low-income students, 2008 to 2014. Just a few highlights from them, I'm not going to read to you, but if you look at overall trends over that six-year period, low-income diploma candidates grew from 15% to 23%, and low-income core students from 18% to 26%. So we're talking about, we acknowledge, we understand the type of students that we have, not just in Wyndham, but in many different communities, okay? And it's important to recognize that this is where we need to help some of these students. You're going to read in some of this, for example, a couple bullets later. Gaps between the performance of low-income DP students and their higher-income peers persisted, but there are improvements that are being made, okay? So we know that there are those gaps, but they are making strides, they're definitely making strides. Back down at the bottom of that page.
What page do you want? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the research brief, 2008 to 2014.
What page?
This one.
Okay.
Yes, it's a front and back.
Low-income students.
Sorry.
Thank you.
In the class of 2013, 82% of low-income diploma candidates enrolled in a two- or four-year college immediately finishing high school. In comparison, 46% of those same students nationally not enrolled in diploma programs enrolled in a two- or four-year post-secondary institution. So almost double, almost double the number of students. I think that's an amazing statistic, and I very rarely put those two words together in the same sentence. Retention rates, on the backside of that, 87% one-year retention rates, 87% of students who were diploma program candidates. Why? Because they walk into college, you know what it's like. You've got a great support system at the high school, you've got them every day, you see them for four years, and all of a sudden, you come into college and you don't know anybody, the professors are like, you know, "Okay, here we are, this is the work, period." And sometimes, maybe you've heard it yourself from some of your children, "This is like nothing I've ever dealt with." My students will come back consistently and say, "I was ready for this. You prepared me, you got me ready, this program got me ready." Okay, and that next italicized part, low-income diploma candidates who enrolled in four-year colleges and universities had six-year graduation rates of 72%. And when we say six-year graduation rates, you look at that, when IB has done all of their research, this is what they look at, because, you know, kids can tend to go four, five, maybe a little longer years to get their bachelor's, it can happen, so they look at this kind of as an aggregate. And 72% that were higher than the national average for those same low-income students and for all students at 15, 9%. So it's a significant success rate for people who have been through the diploma program. That's very exciting, it's really wonderful. On the next column, over on the other side, some recommendations. One of the things that we want to make sure that we can do is, and as we move forward, I want to say that my particular philosophy, which is going to, hopefully, we'll be able to meld that together, is to make sure that IB is available to all students here in Wyndham, okay? There are some schools that do have placement requirements, or tests, or GPA requirements. That should not be the case. Every child should have the opportunity to try this program. I think that's very, very important. We've got to actively recruit those students that we know, the low-income, the minority students, we know are going to struggle. We've got to go in there and say, "You know what? You, I think, you're going to do a great job. I want you to try this program. And because I'm your trusted teacher, your trusted guidance counselor, and I believe in you, and I let you know that, you're going to give it a try. And when you give it a try, you're going to see that this is something that is really good for me," okay? In terms of teaching, what are we doing teaching? I think, you know, as teachers, we all, we've got the, you know, you've seen the textbooks that are about yay thick, right? And they exist, but in an IB program, in a diploma program, you really want to cover fewer topics but get deeper into those topics. You don't need to be an all-encompassing knower of everything and teacher of everything. Trends in student performance, look at your trends, look at how your kids are doing. What can you do? And we use data now all the time. This is a very great, this is a very great system with the frequent and very specifically-defined assessments. This is a great way to see how your kids are doing, and not only to fix it for those kids, but also the next ones that come down the line. You're going to build a culture of high expectations for all students. This is the key. This is the key. We have to build high expectations for all students. The diploma program is a program of high expectations. It is also a program that provides, through its scaffolded learning, a very significant system of support. Teachers are trained to do this program. They know this program, they know how to help their students. So the support is there. Unlike when you go to Psychology 101 with the other 342 kids in the lecture hall, and you're left on your own. This is not that type of a situation. You will be able, you as the teacher, will be able to really support and encourage your students to succeed at this higher level. Other supports, post-secondary systemic planning, college planning. Proactively provide information to parents. One of the things that I did as principal at the IB Academy was, I really involved my parents. I made my parents come to meetings, and, you know, they would get in a panic, they would, you know, "Oh, my gosh, I can't make the meeting tonight, what's going to happen?" you know? And they'd think we were going to send their children away or something, and that wouldn't happen, certainly, but they really took it very, very seriously, and so we got to involve parents, and that's really important. So that's a little bit about that set. Now the next set, increasing access for diverse schools. Again, this is good reading, you know, I want you to take a look on the second page at the quote, and I am going to read you this quote, if you will indulge me, please. This is from a student, he graduated from the IB, from an IB diploma program in 2002, all right, so he's had a fair amount of experience. And by the way, this report was done in 2010, so this child would be well out of college by then. Excuse me. "I grew up in a pretty underprivileged neighborhood. A lot of kids in my neighborhood didn't really think about going to college, that wasn't really an option for a lot of them. And so having gone through the IB program left a huge impression on me and just helped steer me in the right direction. Even though I didn't know exactly what I was going to do or exactly how I wanted to change the world, at least I had the tools, or at least I had a great starting point. I have the IB program to thank for that." And you will hear your students, as they go through this program, they will come back, and they will say the same thing to you. "I heard it again and again and again, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful feeling." On the next page, it talks about an '09 grant that the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation provided to develop tools and resources for assessment and professional development, specifically to help low-income and minority students, okay? And that program is, as you can expect, research doesn't, it's not exactly this year, this year, it's a couple of years behind, but the research since then has showed that there has, it has definitely made an effect. On the next page, "The IB offers educational lessons to historically underserved students. Increasing access to educational opportunities for all students is a strategic priority for the IB." Dr. Garcia in her opening comments mentioned access and opportunity, and that's what this is all about. IB wants to provide this program to as many students as possible. It knows, and I know the people well who work in the office in Bethesda, and all of them, all of them care deeply about student performance, that's why they're in this business. They're not in this business to, you know, make a profit, to sell whatever, they're in this business to help students, and they're very committed to that. So if the main office, if the central staff, the administration of this organization, that's their commitment, the director general comes right out and says, "We're all about customer service, we're all about meeting the needs of our students." Down at the bottom of that page, "The McKinsey Study concluded, 'The diploma program stands out among other high school curricula available today in the U.S. public education system that is both appropriate and valuable for students of average skill proficiency and transformative for minority and low-income, i.e. high-need students,'" okay? The research is there, folks, it absolutely is there. Last page, "The IB diploma is a strong predictor of success for university success." Very quickly, DePaul University, IB students from Chicago, which has a number of schools with IB programs, by the way. The current mayor, whatever you think of his politics, Mr. Emanuel, is a very strong supporter of IB, and under his administration, the number of IB schools in the city has grown tremendously. So we're very pleased with that. IB students from Chicago entering the university are more likely to be low-income, minority, and the first in their family to go to university, and yet they have higher first-year retention rates than their peers from other selective programs in Chicago and first-year students at DePaul. 80% graduate in six years, as opposed to 62% of the total population at DePaul University. So that's just one example, okay? And again, there's a lot here, and as I said, this is great stuff for you to take home and read. The last set, Title I Schools, Participation in University Enrollment and Accessibility. That second paragraph talks about the fact that students from low-income backgrounds are less likely to obtain the high school qualifications that are needed in order to access college and persist and perform at high levels once there. Further, racial and ethnic minorities are disproportionately affected by poverty in the U.S., contributing to gaps in education. In the next paragraph, "One indicator of the IB's commitment to expanding access is the availability of IB programs in schools designated Title I." Again, IB has made a commitment to this. Under fund findings, the italicized part on the next page, "Overall, 60% of all public schools that offered IB programs were designated Title I, targeted assistance, or school-wide programs in 2012 through 2013." This represents a 46% increase in four years. So 46% increase in the number of Title I schools over a four-year period. School-level analysis, Title I schools that offer IB programs have higher enrollments of Asian Pacific Islander, African-American students, and the rate of Hispanic students is about similar, but when you kind of balance it out for all the other bits of statistic, that still shows a growth. I'm not big on statistics, I don't get it, but that's what they told me. So I'll go with it. The students who take the exams in that student-level analysis down at the bottom, the highest percentage in Title I schools, white, then Hispanic, then African-American, then Asian, and then American Indian. And a third of those students qualify for free reduced lunch. So this does affect these populations, very important. Under the conclusions, "Nearly two-thirds of all IB programs implemented in public schools are available to low-income students through Title I schools. The low-income and minority students represent a total notable proportion of students who take DP exams in Title I schools." Finally, the last sentence, very important. "These findings suggest that students from many different backgrounds who participate in the diploma program are successful, similarly successful in terms of post-secondary enrollment." As I said before, colleges want your students, they want your diploma program students, they know what they're getting, because this is a program that is consistently excellent. I do have a short presentation, if I can, hopefully I can find it. And it won't talk back to me. Oh, look at that. Okay, so programs in Title I schools in the U.S. I'm going to kind of repeat some stuff, but it's good to have it visually as well. 60% of all schools were designated Title I, so there it is in graphic form, this will hopefully let you, let it sink in a little bit. DP students from Title I schools enroll in college at a much higher rate, and that's that, you probably can't see it well, but that's that first bar, it says low-income DP students in Title I schools, 79%, okay? And the last reddish-brown bar is low-income U.S. students, non-IB, okay? So 46% versus 79%. Low-income African-American DP students from Title I schools have the highest college enrollment rate among the racial/ethnic groups examined in this study, while nationally the college enrollment rate of African-American students is the lowest, 84% to 57%, significant, significant difference. The IB programs have a substantial presence in Title I schools. Race, ethnic, and income of an IB student has limited effect on his or her college enrollment. What has a greater effect? Their being in a diploma program. African-American DP students from Title I schools have the highest post-secondary enrollment rate among racial/ethnic groups in this study. Oh, and that's the end of that, okay? So that's just a little bit, excuse me, that's just a little bit of some of the research, some of the background, the findings, so on and so forth. So again, as I said to you before, I look at Wyndham and I look at East Hartford and my school, and I see a lot of similarities, and I see that the IB was actually brought to East Hartford with a, knowing that it was an underperforming district, and with the question of learning about the IB program, and the person who was the founding director of the program said, "Why can't we do this? Of course we can do this." And we did it. And I would put the same question here. "Why can't we do this? Of course we can." This is something that will benefit all of the students of Wyndham, even the students who choose not to enroll in the diploma program, who choose not to take IB courses, because all of their teachers are going to be trained as IB teachers. And you can't help but getting infected by those teachers and by the methods of teaching that they have learned, and the way that they present to their classes. It's going to change, it's going to change all students here. And hopefully, I'd love to see one day, 10 years from now, I'd love to come back and find out that, you know, 80% of the students at Wyndham High School are diploma candidates and doing very well and earning their IB diplomas. And I know you're all sitting there going, "What does he mean diploma? Aren't they all going for a diploma?" Yes. This is an IB diploma, that's a discussion for next time, okay? I don't want to get you too deep into this because your heads may very well explode, so we'll save that for another time. But just suffice it to say that a student who was in an IB program, they're called a diploma candidate, a diploma student, DP, diploma program, okay? So that's generally what I have to offer you in terms of where else is the IB. I can tell you that there are many schools in many different parts of the country, a lot in Florida, a lot in Texas, a lot in California. lot in Florida, a lot in Texas, a lot in California. Here in New England, not so much, but it is growing. When I first began as principal 10 years ago, there were very few schools in New England. Now we have a great, the number has at least tripled. In Connecticut right now, we have five, as I mentioned, the Connecticut IB Academy is one, Fitch in Groton, Cheshire Academy in Cheshire, Metropolitan Learning Center, which is one of the correct schools in Bloomfield, and Harding High School in Bridgeport is also a diploma program school. There are many other schools that have the younger programs as well throughout the state, but those are the ones right now that are, that are, that have, that offer the diploma program. So as I said, you know, this is a great program, I think that Dr. Garcia is right on the right path with looking at this as an opportunity for access to a great education for our students here. And I'm happy to take any questions. Yes, sir?
Do the students that want to be in this program, do they have to be, to have a grade point average?
No.
In order to be in this program?
No. As I was saying before, there are some schools that do that, that do exclude at that level, and that is totally counter, the antithesis of the philosophy that IB has, that they're trying to promote. What we want to see in a student is, we want to look at a student that is willing to do what they have to do. It's not an easy program, it's a lot of work, but it's not impossible. We're not asking a child to, you know, build a nuclear reactor or anything like that. We're asking them to work and really get involved in their learning, okay? So there should not be any barriers to having a student take these courses. Yes, sir?
Teacher training?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, like you were saying, almost all the teachers would get this training within the school system, and who provides the training?
IB trains trainers and certifies them, and there's a couple of ways that that can be done. You can either send teachers to sites for training, or if you have a critical mass of folks in a given area, you could bring folks here. You could bring trainers here to, and by here, I don't necessarily mean Wyndham, I might mean Connecticut or Southern New England, but if you have a critical mass of teachers that you want to have trained, you can hire someone from IB to do that.
Time frame, timeframe for training?
The individual trainings is a three-day training. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking me, or...
If you take a teacher out of the school system and we want to make him an IB teacher?
Mm-hmm.
Time frame, how long does that take?
They take three days, it's a three-day training, and they should do it every five to seven years. What I did was I planned it so that it lined up with the curriculum changes, the curriculum revisions that are done about every seven years, because it wouldn't make any sense for a person to go six years after their initial training if they're gonna do a whole new curriculum in their subject area. So we'd wait a bit until that new subject, the new curriculum requirements were established.
Well, I guess the critical thing is cost.
The training cost, it depends, it can be around $2,000 a teacher to send them away. I'm not sure exactly the cost of bringing somebody in, but I know that it is cheaper because you're not worried about the travel, okay? The trainings themselves are around, it depends on where you go, but they're around $1,000 for the three days, and then you've got to include, you know, travel and like that. I really believe it's a bargain, though.
Mrs. Lambert?
So you, over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the only missus, so our other female board members in here.
Okay.
So you take a regular Wyndham High School student, a teacher rather, and in three days, they are certified to be an IB teacher?
They have been trained as an IB teacher, we don't use the word certified, they don't get, well, they get a little, you know, this is for my CEUs, I was there, kind of thing.
They don't get a diploma?
No, that's for the students.
They don't get a certificate program.
They get a certificate, right. But what they come away with is some incredible professional development. I will tell you that, I went to training as a coordinator twice, and both times, it was, over my 34 years of being in education, it was the best professional development I ever had. It was intense, it was life-changing, and then we follow it up, Dr. Garcia was mentioning my involvement with the Guild of IB Schools, we follow that up with informal professional development opportunities for teachers in the area. So we might have, we call them roundtables, and so all of the English teachers, or some of your English teachers, might go to a roundtable in Worcester, for example, at an IB school there, or you might host one in math with your math teacher, so on and so forth. So those, there are those opportunities as well. But yeah, you're gonna walk out of there, you're gonna know what's going on, and, you know, plus, they have access to what's called the Online Curriculum Center, which is a portal that provides them with the syllabi, with support materials, with a blog section that they can kind of communicate with other teachers all over the world about what are they doing, so it's a great support network.
Okay, so we pay to have the teachers take the course. Is there a buy-in fee for international baccalaureate? Is there so much to become a member of this, because I mean, this is an international organization, you can't just take a dozen teachers and give them their three days of training and then suddenly you're an IB school. There's gotta be a buy-in licensing, how does that work? And what does it cost? We're obviously not a wealthy district, and we are resource poor, and I would hate to see resources diverted from students who aren't interested in IB, or from our ECHO program, or from our other schools, to support what I don't, I don't know if Dr. Garcia is seeing, a whole high school of IB students as IB and ECHO only at the high school, or if she's just seeing a small cohort?
Let me answer that. No, 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 this is just a program in the high school.
Okay.
Again, again, it's giving opportunity to students that want something different, so we're not having a high school, IB high school.
Right.
Is another program for students in the high school to have option for that.
Do you have any idea of what size cohort you're looking at? Per year, 60 students per year?
I don't think we may have that, we may have maybe between 30, starting, I mean, you want to start in a small number and then move on over the years, the students that are interested.
I will get back to you, other question, if I can just finish up with it.
Yeah, what I want to know is the answer to the question about the budget.
Well, I'm gonna get to that.
That's, that's my big concern.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, but I wanted to follow up on the other thing, is that what I have seen, most of the times that I've seen new schools come in, it's been a small cohort, as small as eight, you know, like that, but then the program grows. My own school, the first few years, not a lot of kids took all the exams at the end, but by the time I left, we had about 80% of the students that were full diploma candidates. So back to your question about the cost, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I didn't think we were gonna go there tonight, but that's okay. I will tell you that the initial costs, the initial application fees are in the $4,000-ish range per year. That provides you with support, with online support, contacting like that from IB, it provides you with a visit, it provides you with opportunities for training, initial trainings. And then after your application process, which takes three years, then you become what's called an IB world school. Currently, the fee for that is about $11,000, okay?
Annual?
Annually, correct. And then there are also fees for the student exams, so that total number would be a function, obviously, of how many students you had involved in the program.
And the student exams are pretty hefty fees. We have students who struggle here with the $96 it takes to take an AP exam. How do the IB exams and the weight of their certificate or their diploma program weigh up against the AP and the ECE ones? We have a really great relationship with UConn.
Of course.
My oldest is 21, he graduated from here with 24 college credits that weren't duplicates, it wasn't like AP and ECE, 24 individual college credits that transferred. And Zach did as well, he graduated with a significant number and went on to UConn.
I heard he did well with that.
So how does that, he's our salutatorian, so. But how does that, what's the difference? And for the cost, what are they getting different for another $30 or $40 per exam?
What are they getting? They're getting, it's a whole different approach. AP is a great approach, don't get me wrong, but a kid doesn't have to take an AP course to take an AP exam. That's number one, okay? With the IB program, you saw that wheel before with all the, that is, that's the diploma program. You buy into that whole thing, okay? So if you're taking, if you're a diploma student and you decide to go for that diploma, you're taking exams in all of those areas. The exam is a required part of the course, okay? The exam asks you questions that directly relate to what you've been doing in your diploma program courses. For example, in the English portion, and there will be three, two to three sittings per course for exams, so in one, excuse me, one setting of the English exam, you will get a paper like this, okay? You'll have the, you'll open it up, page, page, one piece of prose here, one piece of poetry here, one question at the top. Look at these two, compare and contrast based on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You have two hours.
Okay.
That's it. And so you have prepared yourself to answer that question, to really do some significant critical thinking, to learn how to learn, okay? In the history exam, what we think of as the history requirement, U.S. history, is covered by a course called History of the Americas. So you're not only covering the United States, but you're covering Canada all the way down Argentina. So part of that exam, you'll have 29 questions, 28, 29 questions, you answer, you pick three of them, pick three of those questions, you have two and a half hours to answer those three questions, and they can be on any geographic area that you might have studied. So you're probably gonna get some things that you can answer. The math, like the cap test, is a lot of explaining what you do, okay? So there are, there's only one section of science that is a 75-minute section of the science test that is multiple choice. Everything else is written, is critical thinking, is explanation, is just really intense stuff. The art exams and the music exams are performance. So in the art exams, you lay out your whole portfolio, you take pictures of it, you send it off to the examiner, the examiner scores your work. So it's not a written exam, it's a performance exam, okay? So this is, you know, it's so, to my mind, as I said, AP is a great program, my kids all took AP exams, I don't remember how they did on them, but they all took them. But I wish they had had the IB available to them, because I think that they would have enjoyed that better, you know? This is the whole package, you know, this is, I kind of liken it to, if you go to an AP restaurant, you order off the menu, you order, if you want an appetizer, fine, if you want an entree, fine. The IB restaurant is a prefix for menu. You're gonna order everything, you're gonna get a little bit of everything on that menu, okay? So when you talk about the cost, it may look significant, but when you think of the fact that you are going to directly affect the students in your diploma program, and I hate to say indirectly, not quite indirectly, but you're gonna pretty directly affect the rest of your student population by the teaching that is done by the teachers that have been through this training. So to me, it's an investment that pays off big time. When you want to see your graduation rates improve, when you want to see your rates of college acceptance improve, when you want to look back five years later and see your rates of retention, and look at those, and look at how those are going to improve, when you want to think about the fact that you're going to wind up on some of those best high schools lists because of your performance on IB exams, I think it's a good investment.
Does this also come with its own set of textbooks and the like?
You can buy IB-specific textbooks, but you don't have to.
Well, that History of the Americas, is that what you called it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm assuming that has a different textbook than what our AP history students are probably taking, or our regular U.S. history students are taking, if it's prescribed to a test.
We used to use a couple of different texts, and nothing specific. I gave my teachers the option, when we had money for textbooks, to be able to...
That's what I'm worried about here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, but we were able to go with what we had, quite frankly, for a number of years. There are some of the IB-specific texts that are better than others, quite frankly, and, you know, I always wanted the teachers to make that choice, so you've gotta buy something, you know?
Right. We just did a huge textbook kind of overhaul in this district.
Right, right.
I don't want very expensive textbooks sitting on a shelf somewhere.
Of course, no. Well, you know, and we're looking at, when you think about, if you just got these textbooks, you're looking at, you know, a number of years, probably five years before, this program really affects directly your students, because by the time you get a cohort going and they are ready for their exams, you're looking five years down the road. So those textbooks have gotten used, and they can continue to be used, and you can get supplementary materials as well. Yes, sir?
Yeah, when you're talking about the curriculum, they have to follow the IB program curriculum. It does align with the school curriculum also for the particular high school?
It will...
It's not completely different.
Well, it shouldn't be that different, number one. Number two, what I can also tell you is that, as we look at Common Core and whatever the future of that is, every bit of research out there indicates that IB courses, diploma program courses, meet or exceed the standards of Common Core, which means that they meet or exceed state standards in this state and most other states as well. So yes, you're being covered in terms of what these kids are going to be exposed to, they're going, they're going to get it in an IB program, okay? So the teachers will get a syllabus of what they're supposed to cover, how they cover it, what textbook they use to cover it, they have a lot of flexibility with that. As long as they, as long as they can get their kids towards those assessments, doing well in those assessments, then they've got some good freedom.
Yeah, let's say that you have five social studies teachers.
Uh-huh.
One of them is training the IB program. That particular teacher will be using a different curriculum than the other teachers in the whole school are using.
No, no. Go ahead.
No, not necessarily, not necessarily. So she could adjust her map or his map to include whatever topics need to be included. So the perfect example is Barros. So Barros is doing the Common Core, but they use the NGCC standards, and so Barros right now, during this year, has spent some time, they're using our maps, but what they're doing is infiltrating the NGCC standards in our map. So it's the same situation, so they revise the map or they adjust the map to include those in there.
I'm not sure if my next question is for Dr. Garcia or for you, sir.
Well, let's see.
Why would we start from the top down? A lot of our high school students struggle to read at appropriate grade levels, come in significantly lower than grade levels where they are, they're placed, and an IB program may be out of their reach, or it may be a huge struggle for them, and I know it's a commitment for an on-pace student. Why would we start from the high school down and not the middle or elementary school, and start preparing them for the rigors and the expectations that isn't necessarily being done in our middle schools?
Sure. I'll take that one, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, and then we can tell away the discussion we have here.
Right, right, right.
And I mean no disrespect.
No, 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 none taken. Absolutely not, it's a great question, and it's a question that is asked not infrequently. I tend to find that schools tend to look at the diploma program first, okay? And the, part of the reason for that is that the diploma program, except for the learner profile and the approaches to teaching, approaches to learning model, there's significant difference between the diploma program and the younger grades. The significant difference is that the diploma program is the high stakes of the exams of the, you know, potential for earning college credits. And so you really, it's a different approach. The PYP, the little ones, is more inquiry-based, is more project-driven. The MYP, the Middle Years Program, is more, they have what's called a personal project that they need to do at the end, so it's more of a personal interest kind of a thing. This is more involved, okay? And you don't have to have the other components. One doesn't rely upon the other upon the other for a student to be successful. They're definitely standalone programs. There are, as I mentioned before, there are a number of schools in the state, in New Haven, there's a couple of private schools in Greenwich, in Stanford, there's a couple of public schools that are the younger grades only, and they're doing fine. They're doing fine, it's just, it's a choice. But I tend to find that people go for the diploma program first. And as I said, that was my, excuse me, experience in East Hartford, where we had the diploma program for many years, and then we looked at, then we went and grabbed the bottom, and then we melded into the MYP.
Okay.
Yep.
So most of the positive statistics refer to students who have successfully completed the diploma program, correct?
Well, no, that, who have been involved. And when you read this, when it says a course student, that means a student who hasn't necessarily taken all six of those courses, okay? Or students who maybe didn't do great on the exams, but they had the benefit of the diploma program education.
So if I'm looking at these charts on the fraction of IB program students that succeed in college, that's irrespective of whether they actually completed the diploma or not?
Which one are you looking at?
Any of them.
Oh, okay. It really, those studies talk about students who have achieved well and gotten the diploma itself, the IB diploma itself, but my experience has been, and other people's experience has been, that simply the fact that they're... that they're in the courses, that they're taking the-
Well, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm an academic, I don't buy that.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you from experience.
I don't buy it at all. But, the question is, what's the attrition rate?
Really depends on the school. I know that, in my school, we started out, again, we were, you know, I came on board in 2006, the program had been about five years old at that point, five, six years old. Very small number of students. We got the program to grow through, through support, through informing families what their students were, were in for, quite frankly. And, and so the retention improved. I had, my first couple of classes, I lost about half the kids before 11th grade. By the time of my last year, we started with 52, and we kept 43 of those kids.
Okay, that is the, the challenge that Mrs. Lambert brought up, is that we'll have a lot of, at this point, we have substantial numbers of young people entering the ninth grade, who would, would find it difficult to succeed in this program. And the question is, will they self-select out? If we can establish the program, if the program is, is seen as valuable, then students will prepare for it, but they're gonna have to start preparing for it years earlier.
Well, as I said, not, you don't have to have one program to build on the other, okay? But-
I didn't say they had to prepare for it by taking an IB program.
Right, right, right.
But they have to, they have to get their reading levels up, they have to get their math skills up, they have to get their academic skills-
They have to get their study skills up.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
By and large, our high school students do not have the study skills that I think are probably necessary for this.
I, I, I'm in favor of a rigorous high school education, okay? And, and to challenge students to, you know, to get themselves in a position where they can succeed in a rigorous high school education's a, a, a good thing, all right? But essentially, the success of this program is, is based on the, the students who are successful in the program.
Well, and-
And, and your general population of high school graduates is a broader base, you know, it's, it's an apples and oranges kinda comparison.
Right, and, and so I'm, I'm gonna answer that with a couple of things. One is that, when Dr. Garcia and I, and Dr. Hebert talked about this, one of the things we, we said, and I very strongly believe, again from experience, is that we need to involve the middle school in terms of having the middle school folks understand what the diploma, diploma program is. Maybe even train a couple of middle school teachers, possibly.
Yeah.
But, but then, we're getting it out to the families, we're getting it out to the students, that this is what they can expect, this is what the benefits can be of that. When we have a program with high expectations, one of the things that I learned early on as principal, and again, we were a growing school, we were, you know, growing pains and all that, we learned that the kids needed a lot more support. And that's one of the things that I worked very hard to attain, was, was a good level of support, not only among the classroom teachers for the kids, which they already had that, but other staff members, other support, you know, paras, tutors, those kinda things. And, and quite frankly, each other, peer support among the students. So we really, we made sure that while we had the rigor, we had the supports there for the kids to go to, to look for, to look to, to ask questions, to get help. That's incredibly important.
Okay, so you mentioned third-party evaluation? That's, that's the exams, is that what you're talking about?
So what happens is, the piece of the exam that I was talking about, that's this, you know, that you sit down and you write for two, three hours, those get sent off, and there is an examiner that will read that work, and they will grade that, that work. The scale is one to seven, seven being the best, obviously. And then they will send that work back. So then, the diploma itself, a student earns a diploma by an aggregate score, which is another nice difference from AP, that they're not distinct individual scores, they are put together holistically. If a student gets 24 points, they get their IB diploma. So me, who was really good in language and, and history and English, I can get my fives and sixes in, in those courses. The math that I was afraid of, and the science that I was afraid of, I could get my twos and threes, and I'd still get my diploma, because I, it was an aggregate score, okay? So, so those are done by an outside evaluator who's been trained to do that. But another piece of the entire evaluation is done by the teacher. It's not done on that day of the exam, but throughout the coursework. There are assessments done that, that the teacher, the in-house, the in-school teacher grading is a portion of that entire exam score. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Because it took me a while to figure it out.
Yeah, you're talking about weighted, so it's-
No, no, not weighted, not weighted.
How's that important?
Percentage. So in other words, I'm just gonna give you line, line numbers. The exam, the day of the exam exam, maybe 75 percent. And then the teacher assessment, comments, judgments, whatever, would be 25 percent. And again, I'm generalizing and rounding it off, but it's that kind of a system.
Okay.
Okay? This gentleman over here, yep.
Once the kid chooses to be in the IB program, right? Do they have to take all subject matter in that IB program, or not?
They can, or they can choose not to. They can, you know, in, in my ideal world, in a, a school of this size, they could say, I'd like to take IB music, I'd like to take IB language, okay? And then maybe just take those two or three exams. A student who does all six of those in that wheel is a diploma candidate. So they're going-
And if you don't, you don't get your diploma then?
Pardon me?
If you don't, you don't get your diploma?
You, you don't get an IB diploma.
You get your high school diploma.
You get your high school diploma.
Obviously, but I'm talking office.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's, that's what, I, I love doing the whole, you know, diploma, IB diploma thing. It always is a great relief to people when they, they figure that, that out.
Well, yeah, we, we have so many parents that have complained to us before, because our kid in the system are overtested. They have to take the PSAT, the SAT, the CAP test, the AP, the ECO program, and on, and on, and on, plus every single other class test. That mean they have to take more tests now.
Well, no, these in, these internal assessments, that's actually what they're called, is internal assessments, is what, you know, what Andrew Backhill would give as his test. He may just structure it in the form of it's going to be an IB-based internal assessment. So instead of, you know, a, a grammar test, or, or, you know, a, a three-question test on JNA, or whatever, he would give this, okay? So it's not more testing, the only additional test is that end-of-year test. And quite honestly, for my seniors, guess what was their final exam? Was the IB exam. So during the final exam week, they would, they would be able to, and the days leading up to the final exam week, they would do projects, they would do things that interest them, extra stuff that they could work and just kind of, you know, present to their peers and, and just, they can breathe at that point, you know? So, so really, it's, it's no more testing, it's a different kind of testing.
I, I-
Go ahead, Dr. Garcia.
I would just like to say, as we look at IB, one of the difference between AP and IB, and I do support AP, is you use the word test. The assessment is different. You're talking, AP is an assessment that is multiple choice, et cetera, et cetera. The assessment in IB is a performance-based assessment.
Correct.
That is much different. It's how a student's write, it's how a student compare, how a student perform. Totally different than taking a multiple choice.
Absolutely.
And also, if you look at the philosophy of the program, that AP is more content-based program.
Right.
The IB is content, but it also, is also context. AP, IB has a philosophy. We are developing students that understand the world, that understand the culture of the world. We end, we are developing students that have an inquiry mind.
Right.
That's not the purpose of AP.
Right.
So as we look at IB, it has to do also with how we develop the, the students. It's not only teaching social studies to teach social studies.
Right.
It's teaching social studies in the context, that students are developing an understanding of the cultures in the world, that students are developing an inquiry mind, and that is much different. As the mission said, we're developing students that will create a better world.
A better world, lifelong learners, people who, and, and critical thinking is in there. The writing skills of an IB student will grow off the charts. They will become such good writers, as long as they put, they're working to it, as you can imagine, but the, the strength, and I, and I heard this come back through college professors, time and time again, the, the level of writing that comes to them is, they're, they're amazed that these are, you know, freshmen in college. They're, they're totally amazed. So you're really building some, not only are you building content knowledge, but you're building skills. You're building the skill to communicate, writing is communication. How many times do we hear from employers that, you know, their, their employers, their employees don't know how to write an email? Or their employees don't know how to prepare a report, okay? You got a kid that's an IB student that comes in and work for you? You're gonna get a good, solid report, you're gonna get an email without errors in it, you're gonna get some really good, and you're gonna get some good innovative critical thinking in that job, okay? So the bonuses, the, the, the ways in which this can serve, not only students, but also the community and the workforce, are just incredible. Yes, sir?
So, one of the things that, this is a rigorous program, but what does it do in the way of advanced placement? One of the things that students take AP exams for is that, is that most public colleges recognize most of the AP exams in terms of advanced placement. And that matters to families in our community, because if a student can place out of a semester or two of college, it saves, I mean, we're, we're looking at students that are starting in the fall, are gonna be looking at public universities charging $30,000 a year. So if a student can take a series of courses and place out of a year of college, that saves a family 30,000.
It's exciting here.
I'm not sure that, I mean, I know that IB is attractive to admissions people, but what does it do for you in terms of advanced placement?
Sure, and, and like AP, IB does offer you the opportunity, offers students the opportunity, based on their scores, to earn college credit. It depends on where they go to school, it depends on what the policies of that institution are, it depends, as I said, on their scores. And really, students have to be really proactive in, in, they have to be the squeaky wheel, okay? But there is recognition from, as I said before, from the initial acceptance point of view, but also, once the students are there, they have their IB diploma, they have their sixes and sevens in the courses, in the exams, rather, and depending upon where they go and what the policies are, that could earn them some credits as well. And the same is, the same is true of AP. Every college has an AP acceptance policy, and every college has an IB acceptance policy. And so it really, it depends on, on where they go and how well they've done in the exams.
Most, most public colleges will take most of the AP-based courses, and the ECE courses that are offered here are college credits.
Right.
They're UConn college credits, they're transferable anywhere.
Absolutely. No, I, I know that, I understand that. And as Dr. Garcia said, this is another opportunity. This is not to downplay ECE, not to downplay AP, it's a different opportunity. But, and I will tell you that the state of Eastern, or Southern, or Western, accepting IB credits, or UConn, has greatly improved over the last 10 years. I, I will never forget the day I was sitting across the street, because two of my children went to Eastern, and I was at a ceremony there, and this gentleman leaned over and introduced himself to me, said he was from the State University College System, he was one of the administrators. I gave him my business card, it said IB on it, and he says, what is this IB? This is 2006. I knew I had some work to do, okay? So in the intervening time, we've done a lot of work, my organization has done a lot of work with improving recognition, so that it is much, it's a much better situation now for those students. And you're right, a lot of them are gonna go to those public colleges and, and, and look at those. That 30,000 is still a lot better than, than some of the other numbers. So I would say that in terms of, of AP versus IB, it's pretty equitable by the time all is said and done. Miss Lambert, go ahead.
Can you tell me, your school is a magnet school?
Yes.
One that you retired from?
Correct.
Is it exclusively IB?
Yes.
So students opted in specifically for this program?
Correct, they applied, right.
So that's why you have a really high rate of students who are getting the diploma, or candidates for diploma?
No.
Well, they know what they're getting into?
Now they do, right.
Okay.
As I said, at the beginning, we, you know, the school went through a lot of its growing pains, and we learned that they really, you know, we, the eighth-grade kids had to know what, what was coming towards them. You can't know all of it, you know, but they had a good idea. But we had kids that, that really wanted that kind of education, okay? We probably had a waiting list about double our incoming class, you know, so-
And it's a CREG magnet school, so it came out of the shop?
No.
No.
It's, I worked for the Board of Education in East Hartford.
It's an East Hartford school.
Okay, it's an East Hartford school.
It was in East Hartford, right, right.
Did you guys get chef money?
Uh, yes, not as much as CREG did, but yes.
Right, okay, well, I'm just, I'm thinking about funding, I'm thinking about students affording these exams. I'm thinking about, I pulled something off of a Maryland one, and it said, fee for IB certificate for candidate, one exam is $277. And, you know, the fees go up from there. Fee for 12th grade IB diploma candidate, six exams in 12th grade is $842.
That's about right.
And, and in here, it said that financial aid was available, but you had to apply to the state of Maryland by like October 1st of your 11th grade year, or something like that. And I'm thinking, the state of Connecticut right now is not able to start funding something like this. And I'm just, I'm concerned about the, the funding sources.
Of course, of course.
And, and our students being able to, I mean, it'd be great if they would all take the IB courses and get the rigor and stuff like that, but it doesn't do us any good if none of them can afford to take the exam.
I understand that.
So that's, that's just where I'm coming from on this. So I was wondering, revenue sources for you, and funding sources to be able to fund your school?
Well, I will tell you that, in, in my time, there was a, a state fund for exams. So the state paid for my exams every year.
Okay.
Okay? And never, and I don't believe that kids should have to pay for, whether it's AP or IB exams, that should be something that, that we plan for as, as leaders, you know?
Right.
That we plan for, then, because that's another way of support. You're right, if a kid comes in and says, jeez, I can't pay this, whatever, my family can't afford it, we're not helping our kids. I do know of schools that do sliding scale.
We have some accommodations here in, you know, in Wyndham, but if 30 students sign up, and, God, I hope that they are, you know, most at-risk students, and our students would benefit for the most, the most from this program, 28 of them come to us and say, we can't afford to take an exam, we have a, a big, you know, financial hurdle to overcome in this. And I don't, I don't think that it's not a great idea, and I don't think it's not something we should consider, but that's, you know, I don't wanna start a program and then not be able to afford it, but by the time we-
And I completely understand.
Get all the wrinkles out, and we're doing a great job, and then our first, you know, cohort of students who are ready to take this exam show up, and they can't afford to take their exam.
Well-
Even if we plan with them, for some of them, their families are not living paycheck to paycheck, they're barely making ends meet, and this is a huge hurdle, so.
And I guess how I would answer that is, is my approach to it was that this was part of what I budgeted for. So when I planned my budget for my program, a, a line item was exams. So if you are doing that, and if Dr. Garcia and the high school principal sit down and say, okay, this is what your budget looks like for next year, we're gonna budget $30,000 for exams, because we got 20 kids coming in, and like that, that's already there, it's, the, the question is already answered, okay? And, you know, honestly, and I think I said it before, but it sounds like a big number, but when you think about the number of students in the school, and think about what else you spend some of that money on, it's a small number. It really is. And, and the benefit that these students get from this education, from the preparation for college, and as this gentleman over here said, you know, you, you can save yourself a semester, you can save yourself a year, although interestingly, a lot of the research shows that they stay that fourth year, do a double major, get some, get some pre-grad courses in, you know, it gives them options. It gives them options, okay? So, and, and I understand the money is, it's a tough nut, but if you, to me, it's, it's so important that this program will do so, so much good for so many kids, I think that it's a great investment.
I just wanna say, this is an extremely long process, we decide to go with this. This doesn't happen overnight.
Right.
I, I mean, this takes years in, in the making and-
Right.
I mean, this takes years in the making and planning. What excites me about the program, not only the college possibilities, but what excites me about it is the role of a school in creating a different type of student. And so developing a student that is cognizant of what goes on in the world, and that inquiry mind, so somebody that doesn't only graduate with knowing to do algebra equation, or knowing to do geometry, but it's very sensitive to, again, creating peace in the world and developing a better world. I think that's a plus.
And you'd even see it, I even saw it in the behavior of my students, not only academically, but in general, is that the freshmen would come in, and they would have their freshman behaviors, but a lot of it was peer monitoring, if you will. And they learn from their, their older peers, what type of behavior, academic behavior, "I have to get this done. I can't procrastinate. I can't let this go. I need to develop these study skills that you mentioned before." They're going to see that. They're going to see their older colleagues modeling these things, okay? And so I think that the peer element of it is really important as well. Gentleman over there?
Mine's more of a comment. Just listening to the whole conversation go on, I mean, we're all thinking about this and comparing to AP or ECE as, at an administrator, administrative type level, but to me, who took these AP tests and these ECE, they, they sound very, very similar. And I don't really understand the, as of right now, I don't understand the advantage of having IB with the AP and ECE all together. IB, you said that you take the test, and then a third party looks at it, and you score one through seven. And then I was using the bathroom, so I didn't really hear, but, but the...
No lab pass?
Yeah. So the AP test, I took a test, and it got sent out to who knows where, and I got graded one through five. And you're saying, you get skills, it's more, it's different because of the way the skills run. But at least here, the way the teachers taught it, I learned these skills. Ms. Colton's not here right now, but ask her how much I improved at writing throughout my junior year, taking, I forgot what it's called, language, so learn about rhetoric and whatnot. And another thing is with the tests, saying that teachers can take like a normal, you know, you learn a subject, here's the test, and you make it like an IB type exam. Well, in my US history class, when I took, what we do for our tests is she would take straight out of either old US history exams that AP, the Advanced Placement, would give, or books that are like, you know, obviously meant for teaching that, and an aide. She took it right out of there. There's this DBQ question, which, in short, you're given some, you know, artifact, like a picture, political cartoon. And we, let's say we learned about just the end of the Civil War. There'd be a political cartoon straight out of the AP exam, or straight out of a book, and we'd have to write on it like it was an AP exam. Obviously, you can't do, we wouldn't do the whole thing because you take, it takes forever. But, you know, one class period, take, here's a few multiple choice, here's a few, this is what it would be like in an AP exam, minus a little bit of pressure. And then another thing is that you said in your, in IB Academy, it's about the, when you came in as a freshman, you'd, you know, you'd learn a lot from the older students. Well, when I was here, hopefully it didn't change, you know, the AP classes, all the kids, there was a lot of kids who would have, at least when I went, a lot of AP classes. And we'd all take different things, and that's fine. But there was a culture there where we're all helping each other, and we're all learning from each other. And it's like, it's like what you say. But I just, I don't understand the benefit of having, adding on IB to these already great programs we have, when, from my perspective of taking these, they sound very, very similar. Not exactly the same, but very, very, very similar. And I just don't see the advantage of having all these programs if, if, you know, if it already works. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I know I brought up a lot of points. I was just running through my head.
That's okay. The, for me, the big difference, and you're right, AP programs are great, ECE programs are great, no doubt about it. As Dr. Garcia said, though, AP is more content-heavy, where you're doing multiple choice exams, correct?
There was, but there's also a section...
There is now a writing section. Right, right.
Yeah, I wrote a lot, trust me. And I did a lot of it throughout.
Have you met an IB exam?
Throughout. And it wouldn't be just tests. I would have to write all the time for like just homework.
Right, right. I would say, though, that the big thing is the fact that, in the international baccalaureate, in the diploma program, the test is a component of the course, okay? It is a piece of the course. It is what you work towards. Very similar to what you just talked about, where we would take old IB exam questions. This is how you're going to approach it. This is what you need to do. Very, very similar. But with AP, you didn't have to take those courses to sign up and say, "I'm going to take an AP exam."
It's true, but at the same time, what the AP exam does is like, if I didn't know calculus, I taught myself calculus. With the AP, I don't have to take the course to prove that I know what the content is, which is really what the college credit's about. It's not necessarily about taking the class, even though there are obviously, I don't know anybody who didn't take an AP exam, who didn't take the corresponding class. But if you go, if I wanted to go learn, I don't know, magnetism by myself, and I knew the content, I proved to the college I knew the content, I don't, it doesn't, I don't know, it just, it doesn't seem like it matters to the college. I mean, you get the credit. You show it, you know what you're doing. I mean, I do get the benefit of, you're in the class, you know, there's a difference between just taking the test and sitting through the rigor of a class. But the numbers of that have got to be quite, quite low of just taking the test.
I can't speak to that.
I know.
And I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Lambert?
I just have one more. It just came to me. You're talking about this cohort, how the older students who have been in the program, you know, how does, how do extracurricular activities, sports, drama, yearbook, whatever else, dovetail in with this program? Because it seems with the rigors that you're expecting, and again, on that Maryland one that I was looking at, there's a whole schedule where you have to block everything out, and there's high expectations for all that. And I mean, sleep, 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 study, 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 class, 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 everything is blocked out. How do extracurriculars, so that we were not creating an elite school within a school? Because a few years ago, when we had Dr. Adamowski here, who I'm sure you're aware of, and you're aware of our situation if you've been in Connecticut for a while, he broke the high school up into two different academies, and it didn't work here. It was an abysmal failure. And, and it's starting to come around. They're working much better as a group. They're all involved in sports. Teachers are, are teaching both academies and stuff like that. But for a year and a half, it was very drawn. There was a line. They wore two different kinds of uniforms. They walked in different hallways. And it was very divisive. And our students came to us, Dr. Garcia, I think, was new too, when our students came to us and said, "Please give us our old high school back. I don't want to create an academy and an elite school within our high school. Do they have time for extracurricular? Do they have time for sports?" So it's not the 10, or 20, or 30, or whatever, students who are just amongst themselves doing their own thing, and the rest of the school. And developing all those extracurriculars helps develop a more rounded student, and get, you know, teaches them how to interact with people that aren't necessarily exactly like, you know, are in exactly the same program. How does that work at your school, or at your former school?
Yes, they do have time.
Okay.
That's it. The, you know, you're right, that the time, time management is huge. But you know what? It's huge for just about all students. You know, I can think of one of my sons who was a captain of his football team. And the best he did academically was during football season, because he had to be more structured. And I see the same thing. So yes, there is time for it, but also, if you notice that on that, that graphic with the course representation, you notice the creativity, activity service. That is a required piece of the program, okay? So if a kid is involved in a sport, that's their activity. Or maybe it's their creativity if they're involved in band. Two of my kids, one year, were both the drum majors for the East Hartford High School bands. I've had, you know, swim team captains. I've had soccer team captains. So yes, kids very, very involved in, in sports, in extracurriculars, in drama. We had a couple of lead, lead actors in a play. We had a, they've got a, what do you call it when there's no music? The a cappella. A couple of our young men were involved in that. So yes, a lot of our students were involved in the extracurricular. It really, it does take a lot of effort. My kids used to joke that, you know, when you kept on saying, "Subject, sleep, subject, sleep," I'm thinking to myself, "No, they just took sleep out of there."
Yeah, well...
You know, and, and jokingly, of course, but, but you find the time, you manage your time. And it's a skill that is going to carry them well and do them well at the college level, just like all the other skills.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're all asking some great questions, by the way. You really are. And I really appreciate your comments.
I have an incoming freshman next year, so this is, is happening, you know, to my son possibly, so...
I understand. And I hope it does. I hope it does.
It sounds like a great program.
All right. Anyone else? I think that's it. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is, actually, there's three different sets of dates that we need to think about. We actually, we scheduled the board retreat for August, but I gather that...
September.
No, September.
September.
What we passed, what we, I went back and looked at it. It says 19th and 20th of August on the schedule that we submitted to the town.
September 16.
Last December.
September 16th is the date that, maybe, we amended it. There was a first reading, and then we amended it for the second reading, and we voted on it.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if the bottom one was submitted, but...
I looked at what was in the minutes from, not, I'm sorry, I looked at the agenda. I didn't look at what was in the minutes. Okay.
September 16th and...
So we got, when I went on the website, I couldn't find future dates.
Yeah, yeah. And the Board of Education meetings and dates.
Yeah, it ran out.
There is a retreat there, I believe.
Okay. I, I looked at Board of Education.
Board of Education Retreat, the 17th and the 16th.
16th and 17th of September?
Yep. It's listed right here. I just pulled it up on the district website.
Yeah, I did too.
Why didn't I find it when I looked there?
I don't know, but it's the 16th and 17th of September.
Because you don't know to navigate the web. You need Zach to show you.
Oh, you're going to hurt him where it hurts, Dr. Garcia, telling him he's not technical.
That's a low blow there.
Oh, no. He does need some training from Zach.
It's the design of the website. It's not the user.
There you go.
It's never the user.
I know Zach and I didn't have a problem.
Find a way around that one.
Zach doesn't have a problem finding things on the website.
Okay. So, so is there a problem with the 16th and 17th?
No, no, we just want to make sure that you guys are with those dates, 16th and 17th.
All good.
Good to go? Good.
Is it possible to keep it more local this year?
The last name, we use it because we have no location local.
Okay.
16th is a Friday.
Okay.
And 17th, that may, Eastern was not available for us. We always do it at Eastern.
Is there a reason we can't do it at Kramer? Well, if you need information, it's right there in the next room?
It's up to you guys. We have no issue with that. I mean, the board wanted to do it outside, but we usually do it at Eastern, but Eastern is not available. So we'll try Eastern again, to see. Eastern, where they were redoing their cafeteria or something that time. Any date for board training? We haven't had a board training in a long time. So I was just thinking if you have any date that you, last year, we had a couple of board training at the, a couple of months, like every other month. We used to have some board training, but we haven't had any board training lately.
What date is that local? What dates?
I just put about there, last year, we used to have like every other month. We'll have, I think it was either Thursday, I don't remember if it was Thursday or Friday. I don't remember. If it was a Friday or Thursday, I think it was a Friday. I can't remember. But we used to have every other month, we have a board training. At Kramer.
Sometime in the middle of June, 17th is a Friday.
You want to do board training, I mean...
We'll do that soon.
What do we have scheduled for our workshop meeting for June?
Uh, what we had...
We look at, we're looking at the exit interviews and teacher turnover for June.
Yeah, staff turnover, exit interviews.
I won't be available on the 17th, but that doesn't mean that you guys can't have that meeting.
I'm in Texas on the 17th.
But the board, the board meeting in June is the 15th, right?
No.
Yeah, there is one.
Oh, the 15th is the business meeting.
The 15th.
That's supposed to be...
It's not the workshop meeting.
No, the 29th is the workshop meeting.
If I want to have one, two, two and...
There's, according to the website...
We have two?
The 15th and the 29th, and then July 13th, and then August 17th.
We moved that, all right. We moved it to the 15th because...
Of the graduation.
Because of the graduation.
Right.
Okay. Okay. So you guys can think about training and let me know if there's, I mean, last year, we do, we did have some, like I say, every other month. So think about it, and let me know. And then the summer board meeting, you did have only one in July, I believe, remember?
Right, the 13th.
And one in August.
One in July and one in August.
Right.
And, and the idea is that if we have an agenda, we'll have a meeting.
If an item comes up.
If not, we can, you know...
Yes.
We schedule, we schedule them rather than being pushed into having a special meeting if something comes up during the summer.
Okay.
Okay. So are we, all right, I guess we'll have to think about what we want to do about board training and get back to you.
Yeah, just think about it. And just think about if you want to follow the same format last year of a Thursday or a Friday. We started on a Thursday, and then some of you wanted a Friday afternoon, I think.
Okay.
And we changed it.
Okay.
No, we started on a Friday, and then you guys moved to a Thursday. That's what it was, yeah.
All right. So unless there's further discussion on the dates, we'll move on to public comment on, well, I don't know if anybody wants to comment on the dates. It's Boys and Girls Club and the International Baccalaureate Presentation. Mr. Crane?
My name is Henry Crane, and I live in Willimantic. And I've lived in Willimantic for a very long time. So I would like you to at least consider that the presentations you were made, that were made to you by the Boys and Girls Club group, and the IB presenter was community building. And as much as I like to be very respectful, and respect is earned of the AP students and their successes in their AP classes, and I have listened to my neighbor's comment on the ECHO program, and there, in the, in your budget presentations before the, for the finance, I was very, I, as opposed to their apparent pessimism, I was very happy to find out that there was not so much failures in your ECHO program, but that there were, there were very serious signs in their complaints on that of rigor, that you really expect that in the first year or so of a program, that there might be some kids who don't exactly cut, you know, make the cut. And I listened, and I heard the same echoing program that I heard in my generation of the students who went to college, and who went to their, college of their choice and fell, and had to go to remedial classes in community college to make that up. And that's an expensive proposition, whereas ECHO, if we find out that a student didn't exactly make it in a class, it's a lot cheaper to fix it in high school than it is in college. And that's a very low, least expensive bump for us, the taxpayers, who I, in my income taxes, the gift of Lowell Wicker, the state of Connecticut has such a beast. I've paid a few of those in my lifetime. I really appreciate that you have an ECHO program, that you have the AP program, and that you have, as according to my understanding, the accusation that half the students graduated with AP credits. So if that's the case, you are community building, and I'm very appreciative that these Wyndham Boys and Girls Club, and the, more than even the baccalaureate program, is trying to fix and address the kids who might not be in that top two-thirds. I wanted to, those top two-thirds of a class to participate and get AP classes, but the, maybe the bottom third, or the other third of the class, that those kids can be addressed with the Boys and Girls Club, that they were projecting, in trying to get a budget, I get that, a salesperson, but 80% they were claiming they could help. 80% of a third leaves maybe 6%. If you wind up with a 94% graduation rate, or anything close to that number, you'll be beating the politician's argument that that's our employment rate. So you're really doing well. You might want to consider that. When we finally have a budget, and let them go forward. But that's my pitch for that. I really appreciate, appreciate that there's at least some community building and some understanding that maybe you need to start doing that in the fifth grade, not in the 11th grade. I appreciate those comments that were made the other night, that the Boys and Girls Club needs to reach out in the fifth, and not in the ninth or 11th grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Ms. Galucci?
Yes, Mary Galucci, and I have a son in the high school and one in the STEM magnet school. And I'm always happy to see learning celebrated and academics stressed. However, I don't see the need for an IB program for the following reasons. We really don't need more changes at the We really don't need more changes at the high school. Historically, a high school diploma does mean college readiness. The quality and rigor are not necessarily better in IB than in a traditional high school. Um, there are plenty of honors, AP and early college club courses, as we just heard, that we have already. Um, the, Mr. Arben just said, gave an example of a class and said, we'd be amazed at the students. Well, I'm amazed at a lot of high school age students, they do have a lot of interesting and exciting ideas, not just students in IB. Um, I have to say, regarding the information presented by Mr. Arben, um, I, I don't consider hearsay, anonymous testimonies, blurbs from, from students as evidence. Um, you know, I just don't think that's a really helpful or rigorous presentation he made. Um, I could collect inspirational testimonies from students at average high schools, from Wyndham High graduates, um, and, and about their memories of great teachers and of interesting classes. It's, it's not everyone, but we, I could find some. Speculative predictions, you know, about what's going to happen in 10 years if we have IB are also not, this is not a professional presentation that was made. Um, the statistics given regard, that he gave, regard IB diploma schools. He's not talking about a cohort of a few students, so when he says there's this much success rate and this much college completion rate, uh, you know, really, he's not talking about a cohort of students who may or may not take exams and classes. So let, let's not take this easy pill of this easy silver bullet, this is going to solve all our problems. Um, and what's the value of these statistics from, when they include high-profile IB schools full of diplomats' children? Um, the qualities that make IB successful are the same qualities that make any educational program successful. Um, we do have, I, I believe we do have high expectations for our high school students, but we lack the resources to act on these. Um, we have the AP honor, um, early college, we have scaffold, um, but now we're going to need teachers trained in a specific program. Um, and this is in a school that has high, that has high teacher turnover. Again, I don't see that as fiscally responsible. Um, also, the Connecticut International Baccalaureate School in East Hartford is an inter-district magnet school. Um, we, this, um, we need to disaggregate the magnet aspect. Uh, the supposed success of IB schools is likely similar to that of any magnet school student, where the schools get additional money per student, like the STEM in this district is the best-funded school, has the best resources, and it's actually not fair to the rest of the students in this district. Um, but we can't discount the magnet aspect of IB. Um, I would also like to say, what do you think teachers do in class? Students should be doing critical thinking in a history class and studying the First Amendment would, would be a great start. Um, if you stop requiring so many standardized tests, and I am glad to hear the superintendent say that standardized tests are, are limited usefulness, um, we could have great reports, critical thinking, lots of projects going on in the class. Um, also, our teachers deeply care about students, not just in IB schools. I mean, there's a sort of sense that this, um, presentation is made against, uh, first of all, about some fantasy program, which where every IB success is, is thrown into a basket, and against our, our unsuccessful, uh, school model, which is partly in trouble because of the funding. Um, so I have to say, you really need to ask some serious questions about the prod, of the, the, um, the presentation that was given tonight. And I also really don't feel that it's, it's proper to show Youtubes in presentations. That is not really the best way to do this. Um, again, liter, the literary analysis he gave is a test, that's a typical English test that an English teacher would give, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Galucci.
Yes.
Okay, we only had two people sign up tonight and, uh, we intend in the future to limit comment to those people who did sign up, but that's a policy we're in the process of. So if there's anyone else who didn't get to the list and see the list, okay? No?